And call the Maverick County regular meeting to order. Today is November twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. It is five o'clock and there has been an establishment of prayer with all members of the court present. This time we'll go ahead and call for citizens communications and recognition. Do we have one that has been submitted to the court? Item, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. David Silverton, correct. Are you wishing to speak for the court today?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, go ahead. If you can, just right here at the podium, if you could just state your name and just, of course, let you know that we have approximately three minutes for the open. Yes, how are you? For the citizens communication portion.
So sorry.
They'll be right in forty.
All right, here.
Are we gonna have order on the court, please?
All right, thank you, Judge, thank you, Commissioners. I wanted to introduce myself first off, I think I've met some of y'all. But my name is David Silverthaw, I run Texas Rio Grande Public Defender. We are a nonprofit organization that some of you may be aware has been partially funded to set up a public defender office in Maverick County. And I wanted to address the court to introduce myself and speak very briefly about some of the financial benefits that a public defender office provides to the county. Obviously, we're not on the agenda today. We would appreciate being considered shortly, not today, but at a meeting in the upcoming future. For those of you who don't know, a public defender's office, its primary objective is to represent people who are accused of crimes and cannot afford lawyers. You might be wondering how in the world would that save any county's any kind of money. I visited earlier today with Chief Deputy DeRio in the Sheriff's Department. And he was informing me that in two thousand twenty-one, prior to COVID, the county jail was able to take in around three million dollars in revenue from contracts with federal government, the Kickaboo Tribe. And now, after COVID and after ballooning jail population, is only able to take in less than one million dollars in revenue. So in other words, last four years, the county is losing two million dollars in revenue that it was previously had. Additionally, in the last year, he's telling me about a case, and this was a specific individual who had been sitting in jail for months, had not been convicted of a crime with serious medical issues that arose. And the county ended up having to foot a bill of two hundred thousand dollars for this individual's medical costs. A few weeks after the medical costs, this individual's bond was lowered and he was released. So Maverick County ends up paying the bill for two hundred thousand dollars in medical costs for somebody because they haven't talked to a lawyer in months after they're arrested. One of the primary advantages of a public defender's office, which our office provides, as approved by the state, provides six attorneys, full-time staff, to be dedicated exclusively to representing clients in Maverick County, Dimmitt County, Zavala County, but Maverick is the lion's share, because it's the largest county, is consistent professional communication with clients to make sure that anybody who's sitting in the jail has contact with their attorney and that if it's appropriate for them to be released pre-trial, that they are released. That is not happening right now. That's just not, that comes right from the folks who are running the jail, unfortunately. It's an unfortunate reality. What that means for the county is that it's paying more money than it needs to. Because with a public defender's office that is contacting a turn, that is contacting clients, we can have people are released before, after they're arrested and ends up saving the county not just hundreds of thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars in medical costs, but also frees up beds to contract the federal government with Kickaboo Tribe to recoup some of that millions of dollars in revenue that is lost since two thousand twenty-one.
Let me give you about thirty seconds to wrap up, because you're already, why did you three minutes?
Absolutely, Judge. Just to kind of touch the chase, the cost for the public defender's office to Maverick County is a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. As I discussed, there was an individual who sat in the Maverick County jail and medical costs alone were two hundred thousand dollars last year. That's one person, covers the entire cost of six attorneys, paralegals, investigators, case workers, office space. I guarantee you that a public defender's office will save this county money in those lineups. I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much, Mistress.
Thank you, Judge.
We'll be in contact, thank you.
All right.
Moving forward, being that there are no other citizen communication forms that have been submitted, we'll move forward to item number three.
Judge, I would like to address Judge under this portion of the citizens communications.
Okay.
Judge, my office submitted two item agendas to your office on November the third. Out of the two items, one of them did make it to the agenda, which is item number ten. But my other item is a project that I'm working in Chula Vista, and this is something that continues to happen. My items don't get placed on the agenda, and I've addressed this court before multiple occasions, the signing of the agreement. So I want legal.
Placed on the, in your box, was it, could you, could you bring the Commissioner his mail, please?
We're discussing something that's on the agenda.
No, no, but we can go ahead and address that because that issue has actually been put.
Okay, can I proceed?
We'll get, we'll get.
Okay, well, I just wanna finish.
Is that on?
I just wanna make sure that my items get placed, and I'm sure legal can help me with that and placing an item on the agenda so that this doesn't continue to happen. Again and again, I see precinct one items being left out, agreements not being signed, so my projects are destined to.
Do you wanna take that files or?
Yeah, it took me a month. I had to do this right now so I can get it signed.
That file has been sitting in your box since November.
Discussion, he's telling you that's just my comments.
No, that's fine.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Is there anything further then? If there is not, at the next time, Commissioner, please just make sure that you submit a citizens communication form for that submission. Moving forward, I will go ahead and proceed with the process of the declaration of conflict of interest. Are there any conflicts that need to be submitted to the court at this time? I'll submit item number two under executive session as a conflict. There are no others from the court. We'll go ahead and proceed. Moving forward to item of consents, consent items, items number four through ten. For that purpose, item number four through ten, are there any items that wish to be placed into the regular portion of the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent items as they've been presented? Motion's been made by Commissioner Reese, is there a second? Second has been made by Commissioner Rios, discussion. Being that there are none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number eleven, discussion and appropriate action to approve reject phone and internet service providers. For this purpose, Ms. Garcia, I believe that she'll be presented to the court today before this item, is there a motion to open the item? Motion's been made by Commissioner Rios, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Ramos, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item is settled, Ms. Garcia.
Yes, good evening, Judge and Commissioners, I've got something so that you can have a visual as to what I'm getting discussing there.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do I have three minutes?
No, no, you've got, you're in the presentation.
Um, okay, so I know this time last year, I was here to pretty much propose that I was going to do an assessment of the entire county. With that, I worked closely with Mr. Garcia, which was an excellent assistance, and the IT department of the county to put together an analysis for you. What I did find, I mean, there was a lot of findings, obviously, but what I did find was overspending with the county, and I found a lot of old products. So with that said, you can actually go through everything and kind of read it verbatim or for word, but numbers don't lie. I was able to.
I copy. I don't know if you have the extra copy or the clerk's place.
Yes, how many do we need, does anybody else have one?
Just her turn.
Okay, so what we did find, that there was twenty-four total county sites. There was a site survey where we actually walked through the buildings, asked questions, and found out that there was two hundred and seven phone users. And everybody was on different, just different platforms, different products. Then we did acquire the bills from Mr. Garcia, and the bills included an assessment of fifty-seven bills total amongst different providers. So you're talking about AT&amp;T, there was twenty-four with AT&amp;T bills, there was Spectrum had thirty-two bills, and a company called ESI, which is Artcom out of San Antonio, had two bills. So that was actually a nightmare, I'm sure, for the purchaser, right? They've gotta pay fifty-seven bills a month, and they all have different, obviously, products. And I'm gonna go into the supplements a little bit, because I did do a high-level proposal for that. Well, with that said, we wanted to do a uniform solution for the entire county. What we did see, if you wanna actually open the app with the proposal where I kind of address everything that I wanna do, word for word, on the second page, there's an executive summary, and like I said, numbers don't lie. When I acquired all these bills, what I did notice that your current monthly with your voice services comprised from Spectrum, ESI, and AT&amp;T, you're spending fifteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty-three cents. What I did do behind that is I put it in a spreadsheet where you saw every single account number, every single product you're using, and what exactly you're paying per penny. Then I did the internet services, and what the county is paying for internet services and very poor internet services, eight thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars and eighteen cents. So the monthly cost of internet and phones the county is paying is twenty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents, to be exact. Now, I'm only as good as the bills that I received, right? So if I didn't receive a bill there, then I'm gonna be off that number, but everything is tallied behind that. Well, since I do assessments, I assess how the county was, I ask questions, how is internet speed, how is phone? Can you communicate, what kind of features do you have, what would you like, how is the county currently being, how is the communication flow? So after all the questions that I asked with the IT, because we did do a discovery, we wanted to see where the county wanted to go with the product that they wanted to see, right? They, do you wanna see a basic product, you wanna see a more, a robust product that has feature, that has, that is AI embedded, that can support any kind of contact, customer support, so that if people are calling in, they're actually getting routed to the correct, to the correct people. So after getting all that information, I was able to vet out the, what I recommended for the county. So I recommended that we do go with a company, or we got multiple pricing from multiple companies, but there's a company that does support the government, the government E-rate, which you guys get the best rate. And for the two hundred and seven phones, we would actually implement them and blanket the entire county with the same product where everybody can have just a one-touch dialing. If you wanted to call one of the courts within the county, you could do that just by picking up the phone. Every call incoming and outgoing would be recorded. There would be an AI intelligent remote auto attendant to support any and every department, any way you like it. There would actually be a portal where the IT people could see all the incoming outgoing calls and actually take AI note-taking. There would be statistical surveys done, so say you wanted, there was an election going on, and you wanted to see how many percentage of people that called about election polls or questioning, you know, candidates or constituents. There was, there's research and market where the AI note-taking from every single incoming outgoing call would actually give you those research, that research. So just a very robust system. Now, the system would cost, would cost you no money, there would be no investment, you wouldn't have to pay for any product upfront. The company that I would recommend is a company called GoTo, and we would bring that fifteen thousand dollar voice service to four thousand dollars, pretty much. And you'll have the entire new system with no upfront cost, they'll give you the phones in the pricing, which is a lease agreement, but I always recommend a lease agreement. Anything happens to the phone in the term of the, of the contract, they actually just give you a brand-new phone, they don't ask any questions. So I, there was a set of phones I also recommended, which is the Poly Edge phones, and the reason I recommend these particular phones is because they are American-made phones. The other products, they're good products, but they're Chinese-made products, and I know that the government and municipalities are actually gearing towards more American-made products. So with the proposal that I put together with the voice and internet, upgrading the entire county, it was going to save the county fourteen thousand dollars a month. So, or actually ten thousand dollars a month, ten thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. So if you see, there was a current monthly spend with your voice and your internet that you're currently doing, that I talked about, and there's a proposed monthly. So the proposed monthly, you're actually, your phones would go to, instead of sixteen thousand dollars, you would pay four thousand dollars. And then the internet would go up a little, but you would get a faster, always connected, dedicated internet at every location site. So your monthly cost, instead of the twenty-four thousand, would be thirteen thousand dollars. So I have actually negotiated with these providers to actually give us six months free for one and three months free for another. So Spectrum has said that they would do all the fiber for the entire county, and they would give us three months. The voice provider said they would give us six free months, so that we could get acclimated. My entire team would do the implementation, we'll do the rollout, office by office, and we would cancel the bills that are currently being billed. In other words, we wouldn't want you to double bill, so that the free months would just be in lieu of not wanting the county to double spend. And then after we transitioned, the, all the numbers stay the same, nothing changes in the, in the phone numbers that used to contact any office, that all will remain the same. There's no fee in porting, shipping, equipment, activation, there's no fee in any of that, because you're the government. So there's no upfront money for anything, it would just be a monthly spend, and it wouldn't start till, the voice provider won't start until six months after, and the internet provider won't start till three months after. And I would, me and my team would oversee the entire project, and those are, those are the. It looks like, I would probably recommend, there's an option of a thirty-six and a sixty-month, Judge Kandu, and I would recommend a sixty-month. And the reason I say that is because this particular project takes time, takes time to implement. Nobody wants to rip out a project they just did after thirty-six months. We would obviously continue after thirty-six months. So if we, we, we take the sixty-month pricing, it's much lower, and the savings looks, if we do do the sixty-month pricing, I think it's six hundred, I wanna say it's almost six hundred and, six hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars over the term of the sixty months if we do the implementation of the internet.
And savings.
Over, over half a million dollars. It's kind of a no-brainer, I mean, I've done this for many, many customers. What ends up happening is that you stay on these old products of AT&amp;T, you go on a month-to-month rate with AT&amp;T. I mean, the findings, when I saw one bill for one phone, just one phone line, Judge Kandu, you were paying eighteen hundred dollars, one phone line. And there was multiple phone lines like that, we need to get rid of those, those are not, I mean, it's, it's, it's money, it's taxpayers' money. And it's something that we could, we could allot in other, other budget and use it for other.
Other areas. And I know that when, when we brought this before the court, sometime back in order to do an assessment and to go through the entire review, this morning, and that was the biggest concern that I had as far as, you know, moving into this, to try to see the savings as to where we can find dollars when we need them, right now.
Yeah.
Okay, so this was one area that I knew that possibly we would be able to find something.
Yeah.
Because the contracts that I had seen were just, they are either old, they were going on a month-to-month.
Exactly.
And it was something that had been multiple invoices for multiple lines. The one thing that I can appreciate from this issue is that, one, we are pretty much getting all county departments here at the courthouse, off-site, in the precincts, at Roden Bridge, at, you know, finance and everything, everybody would be operable to get. So that means that everyone would have pretty much one extension that we could just pick up and say, you know, I wanna, you know, call Commissioner Ramos, extension, you know, for, you know, three, three, three.
You have auto attendance, right, that could do that for you too, answer any questions, like, do you want, you go to Commissioner's Court, you know, dial one, you know, Auditor's Office dial two, like, all that, just high-tech stuff that costs much less than what you're paying now, but because you're on old products, like, you don't know, it's not that you don't know any better, but you don't know any better, right? So with that said, I, I also, this is what I also do with my findings, I go through every single contract and see if you're under contract. The last thing I wanna do is, I wanna, we wanna avoid any kind of termination with any contracts, so, so we can do the, do the, do the math and see, is it feasible for the county to do this? So you are under no obligation at any spectrum contracts, everything is month-to-month, AT&amp;T, everything is month-to-month, so we have no, like, we're gonna cancel a contract, none of that stuff. The only, the only company was an ESI company with the gentleman Artcom, there is a cancellation with one office of his, but that would be, you know, the numbers, I mean, we're saving, we are saving almost twelve thousand dollars a month. I mean, if he's gonna charge us five thousand to cancel, well, I mean, we'll, the ROI is one month, you know what I mean? So I'll just have to get a full of what he would do to do his, because he's the only one out of contract, in contract, everything else is out.
And that was for a?
For a, it's, what it is, it's, it's called ESI, and it's a phone system at one of the offices. Now, we could do this, we could just not cancel him and leave him, and then I'll put it, we can put it in our calendar, and then we can switch his office, so we don't, you know what I mean? So, and that'd be the only office, like, the oddball office, until they come out of contract, and then we can switch him over. That's not a problem either, I could do it however it is that you'd like, I mean, I'm here to do for you.
May I enter?
Yes, I'm sure.
And what are we looking at for the transition period to?
We're looking at a hundred and twenty days transition period, and we, we work fast, so we're on top of everything. The quicker we get it in, the happier you are, the quicker we dissolve all the old bills, because the conversations start with the IT, and then they end with the purchaser, and they end with the accounting. We wanna know, hey, we're, don't pay that bill anymore, we've already canceled this, we've canceled that. So we kinda just take over, we just come in like, you know, scavengers, right, we just take over, like, let's, we'll, we do it. I've been in the industry for three decades now, I know exactly, I worked for AT&amp;T for seventeen years, I know exactly how the cancellation process works. So we do all that step-by-step, so it does take a hundred and twenty days, and we work as fast as, as, as he wants to, or slow. I would like to do the project fast, I would like to do it over, over the holidays, obviously, because it's the end of the year, these companies, these providers have given us free months, because they wanna close business as well, you know what I mean? So I was able to negotiate that, and it's a good time. I mean, I know, I know the assessment took us a little bit, but there was a lot, there was a lot going on. Also, I did see another savings, Judge, and I know that we didn't talk about this at all, but I know that the county has, is spending almost six thousand dollars in mobility cell phones. And that's everything comprised from self-owns for, for FirstNet with AT&amp;T. And so as, as I saw that, there's also employees that have company cell phones. With the program that you're gonna get, the new phone system, they have an app where you can emulate your office phone on your cell phone. So if you could do a stipend, that's half the price of that cell phone bill, which is what the city of Far just did. So the city of Far, we implemented a thousand phones, what they did, they took the fifty-dollar stipend that they were doing for the employees, then they cut it down to twenty dollars, and the employee put the app on the cell phone. So what that means is that if you call to my office phone and I don't answer, it rolls over to my cell phone in the app. If you wanna dial out, you can dial out from your office number from the app. So you're not using your personal number for anybody to see, you're using the company or the county's information. So with that said, you could also say, we could do a high-level next assessment on that, and I can assist with that as well. And there's no fee in the consulting that I did, I know, I talked to everybody about this the last time. What ends up happening is the providers that you pick, they end up paying me, right? So we went through several providers, you know, we're gonna see some demos, more demos, but we've already gone through the assessment, and I already know who I should recommend, and that's, that's where the numbers are coming from, from the people that I recommend and what I think you should do. Of course, at the end of the day, you can do whatever you want, right? You're like, you can, Monet, you're crazy, I don't want this provider, or I don't like this product, but this is the way I would do it. There's many ways to skin a cat, and this is the way I would set up the county so that there's uniformity, there's a simplified with the billing. So you'll only get two bills, you get one bill for all the phones and one bill for the internet. You will not get sixty-seven different bills to pay. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I'm sure.
I do. I'm looking at the internet connectivity here, so you're working with Spectrum, AT&amp;T, and ESI.
No, currently, you guys are on AT&amp;T, Spectrum, and ESI, that's the current. The proposed is that I, well, no, 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 so I, I pulled the AT&amp;T pricing for all the locations, they came out a little higher than Spectrum. So to me, I mean, it's more cost-effective to go with Spectrum, and a lot of the locations are already on Spectrum. What I do wanna do is I wanna upgrade from a coax product to a fiber product. And what that means to you is that it's a dedicated internet, it's slowly to, for that particular office. So what, what ends up happening, what I was hearing a lot from the, from the community, or not from the community, from the, the offices, is that they're always down with the coax product, it's just, it's in and out. With a dedicated fiber, which is the same, almost the same price, a little more, it's dedicated, so it never goes down. It's got a service level agreement of ninety-nine point nine percent, and it's, it's, if you're down, the company pays you, there's no being down. So coax is a product that we should use at our homes, is what we buy at our homes. You guys have it at all your business offices, and it's just not the right product to use. It's an open product, everybody on the block can, can actually come into your, to your internet usage and do some, you know?
So as far as the infrastructure that the county has, though, I mean, we could easily transition into something like this without having massive interruption with.
No, yes, exactly, no. In other words, everybody will use their current stuff, as soon as we put in this stuff, the phones port over in five minutes, and the internet, all the IT has to do is take one plug out and put it, and we would do one office at a time, like, I wouldn't take down the entire county, like, no, no.
Okay.
And so it's easy, because in the cloud, it's so easy just for the, the losing carrier to release the number and the new carrier to pick it up. Like I said, we did the city of Far in fifteen minutes, fifteen minutes. Yeah, the county was, the city was down for fifteen minutes, but, I mean, they're, I mean, they've got an excellent system. And what I did is I put their phones side by side, and one stopped working, and the other one started working. And we can do it at a, at a low, low peak time, when there's not a lot of calls going through, you know, kinda like latter part of the day, maybe closer to a holiday if we'd like, you know what I mean? When it's kinda starting to seem like a ghost town around here, we could do that. I'll always, I'll always consult you and tell you the, 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 the choices to make as we move forward. I'm on every single call, implementation call, I make decisions for you, you're just kind of there because you have to be there, because I need you to be in the know, you and your department. And then to assist, the IT has to assist in helping me as well.
Any other questions?
No, I, I mean, I like the savings, I know we're looking for money everywhere.
What I tell Judge Kandu is it's just misspending, the more months you go, you're just misspending sixteen thousand dollars on just nothing, it's just bad products, so. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
The monthly savings are great, I'm, I'm looking at that, is this part of the proposal also already figured it into those monthly savings?
Exactly, that, go to that company, they're actually, they've given you an E-rate price, which is already negotiated with government yearly, you know how that works? They're called TIPS, TIPS contract. So they have, they have excellent customer service, they will actually dedicate one person to just support the entire county, which I liked about that customer service, their pricing's good, they've extended to six months, they, there's no cost in the phones. Everybody else charges like, oh, you have to spend X, Y, Z amount of money, they're not gonna charge us anything. Not activation, not training, all the employees, not anything, and I love their white glove rollout, and they did give us the best price.
So the thirteen, thirteen thousand monthly figure, that's what we would pay?
Savings, that's your, okay, so are you looking at the voice, or are you looking at?
I'm looking at the, at this.
Oh, yeah, that one.
The proposed monthly.
Yeah, the proposed.
The proposed monthly, exactly, so.
Which we're paying twenty-four thousand now.
You're paying, exactly, so you're paying right now twenty-four thousand, because you pay eighty-four forty-two, just the internet, and then the voice you pay fifteen thousand eight ninety-five, so right now you're paying twenty-four. It'll go, if you change to the voice, the unified voice system that I told you about, that you don't pay anything upfront, no activation, no shipping, no training, cost, no nothing, it's thirty-nine thirty-three a month. So what we'll do is we'll transition you, and then we will cancel everything else, but the new company is gonna give you six months free. So that'll help us clean up all old bills, so we're not double billing at any time. So once we start, you know, getting acclimated to the new products, then we start canceling all the old, and then the internet services, they're gonna go up a little bit, but we're gonna be top of the line internet service. And I'd rather you take money from one product that you're not really and put it in another. So yes, you're gonna go up in the internet services from eighty-four forty-two to ninety-eight twenty-five, but you're gonna have robust speed at all the offices. You're gonna have, it's never gonna be down, and what I recommend also is these particular phones are, they're supported over internet. So if the internet goes down, the phones go down, and so how good was my consulting, no good. So I recommend an internet that never goes down, so that when the voice is on it, you're both secure. Now, for some reason, there's a natural disaster, and the internet does go down, because something happens and your power goes out, your cell phones will have the app for the office numbers, so that they'll still call, you'll still receive calls, outbound, everything.
How about for those of us that have the offices out in the outskirts?
Yes, so we.
Right now, we are struggling currently with.
Exactly, yeah, so all of that has been conveyed into the pricing, and so we, the, the provider spectrum is willing to do the finance costs and do the construction for the entire county. Exactly, yeah, so all of that has been conveyed into the pricing and so we, um, the, the provider spectrum is willing to, to do the finance costs and do the, the construction for the entire county. Yeah, for, at no cost to you, like they're not gonna charge you. Because you're gonna sign, you know, you're gonna sign a thirty six or sixty month contract, so you're gonna, um, their ROI is, is embedded into the finance of the construction and I've negotiated that as well.
So our proposed monthly cost will be thirteen seven fifty eight plus the four?
No, it'll be a total of, no, it's a, a total of thirteen.
The total is thirteen, so.
The total is thirteen, so it's nine of the internet, ninety eight twenty five of the internet and thirty nine thirty three of the phone system. So combined it will be thirteen seven fifty eight, giving you a savings monthly of ten thousand five hundred and seventy eight dollars. And then what I did obviously was I did the monthly savings and I multiplied it by the, by the sixteen month, cause that's what I recommend we do. We can do thirty six month, it's up to you, but you'll get the better pricing on the sixty. Um, the sixty month contract term savings is the six hundred and thirty four thousand and you'll see that on the executive summary, which actually reduces your telecom and internet, um, uh, monthly. Cost by forty three, forty three percent, that's almost half, it's almost half.
So the, yes, so the contract that you.
Right.
Are proposing this sixty months?
I recommend sixty because we're not gonna do anything in thirty six, we've just ripped everything out and put everything new, so you're not gonna be like, oh, Monet, I wanna a whole new phone system. Not gonna happen, I, I, people, people are like, I just put it in, why am I gonna? So we either get a thirty six month, which is higher, or we get a sixty month, which is lower. So you get more, at the end of the day, you just get more savings if you decide to do sixty month. And if it was me and I was going to purchase, or you can do whatever you want, like the thirty six is still open for you. But it will lessen the savings and we're not gonna do anything at thirty six months. Judge is gonna be like, we just got new phones wanted, it just seemed like yesterday, cause thirty six month does go by, but those phones, you know? And the company that you're currently with after thirty six month, if you want new phones, we just swap them out and get the brand new, uh, phone that's out on the market. Cause I'm sure they'll be flying by that point, you know what I mean? Like they're touchscreen, they're digital right now, they're, um, voice recording, they're, they're, they've got all the features now, they're Bluetooth. They're, you know, Wi-Fi compatible, there's so much with the phones, but in three years, we don't know what we're gonna get. And so they'll swap them out every three years if you just want the phone swap out, but you stay with them as the service provider. And like I said, they have excellent customer service and they do white glove treatment for implementation, like they did with the city of far and the city of far loves them.
Well, Commissioners, I think that, you know, it's, it's a great option for us to, to move into, especially when you're looking at the overall savings that we can obviously look at from the court side. Um, you all have asked me to find savings in different areas. And that's where obviously one area where we could possibly find that, that savings and upgrade our services in our county offices. That obviously are directly, um, impacting our citizens whenever they do call. There are some offices that right now are going through some major issues when it comes to connectivity with their phone lines. Um, you all are very well aware of that issue, I know one of our JPs.
That's corporate, that's corporate product and corporate products AT and T is doing away with them, that's why they're charging eighteen hundred dollars for your phone lines. Cause they don't wanna have to re, they don't wanna have to fix a flip phone, it's really the, 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 the way I, I tell people, they don't wanna go back and fix old products, they wanna pitch on new products. So that you move away from those.
Yeah.
And so that's what I would, I would assist in doing.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, Judge.
No.
That's, I, I wanna, based on the, the report that we got, I know it's been a while since you came and we requested this.
Exactly.
On behalf of the judge and based on the report that you presented, I move that we move forward in, in approving. And accepting the provider UVO.
It's, it's here.
It's a, so you would, you would actually go with Spectrum?
The phone and internet.
Spectrum and GoTo and there, the paperwork is in your email, um.
Okay.
To come through, yes, for signature.
So I move that we move forward on, in accepting the internet service provider.
And this would be for Spectrum and GoTo?
And GoTo, you have two of us.
Alright, so based on the recommendations that are coming from our, uh, consultant who has been hired, um, Monitec, uh, on these, uh, matters. Uh, there is a motion that has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner, uh, Rios' discussion?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Um, appreciate all the hard work that you.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, how much is your services?
I don't agree. So I think we talked about this the last time, I think you're the same gentleman that asked me the last time, um, Commissioner Morales. But, uh, what ends up happening in this particular industry is that, um, I always gave my consulting for free, I didn't never charge for it. What ends up happening is the provider, whatever provider you pick, if you pick AT and T, Spectrum, they pay me, once you sign the contract. Now, if I die tomorrow, you guys still have a, a connection with the providers, I don't have any, I, but I will support you all throughout the contract. Um, the providers pay me though.
You're not dying tomorrow.
I'm not dying tomorrow, no, but like, some people will sell a service and they'll resell a service, I'm not reselling, it's directly to the provider. I'm just doing the consulting, this is what I think we should do, so that you more have uniformity.
Is there any further questions?
Hi?
Yes, Commissioner.
It's a rosy situation, boy. I just would like to check on the, are, do you have any concerns?
Answer.
Of course.
Basically, because of the wiring and the different offices that we have all over the county. The infrastructure to get this going, would it be?
So it, so Spectrum will do the, the fiber, um, uh, construction, so they'll find out where the fiber is and they'll bring it to the building, that's no cost to you. What they also do is they bring it right to the building, as soon as it gets to the building, the IT people will, uh, do a, what, what is called a WAP, it's called a wireless access point. And that takes the internet to the, but that's the only, that's the only thing that you would need is a wireless access point and I'm sure you already currently have them, you have to have them.
And that was my other question.
Yes.
I'm not sure if our IT guys have seen this or if it is.
Yeah, so we, we, uh, all summer long, we did, we did the walkthrough with them, they're the ones who gave me all the county sites, they're the ones who confirmed with me like the phones. Um, they were, they got busy, they got busy over, over the summer, I'm sure, they've got other projects, like, so I went ahead and came down myself and did site surveys at every, at every office. And then, um, the offices that we couldn't contact, we called them and they told us the number of desktops they had, so that's how we got, we got the actual amount of all the phones. Um, we, we continued to try to contact them, that, there was no response after a little bit, but our, our, our assessment was already done, pretty much.
And as far as the support?
Yes.
Anything we're to have that involved in the IT department?
Well, the only thing I'm not is an IT person, so I can't come in and, and wire you. I can assist with all, like setting the phones, I know where they go, telling you what to do, portals, all that stuff, the IT would have to help us connect. But it's, these phones are Wi-Fi, so we're not even, we're not even gonna like wire the phones, the phones are Wi-Fi compatible. So we, all we do is program the phones and, and we connect each other to the, the Wi-Fi, once I, I've put in the Wi-Fi, I'll know the password.
So there would be no cost to?
No cost to them, no cost. But if they wanted to, I thought, um, because I know that some of, some of the buildings do need wiring. Um, and we, that could be our second project, with the savings, we can take it and start, you know, putting it back into the buildings, what, I know that you guys need it. So as soon as, well, the dust has settled with this after the hundred and twenty days, let's move on to our secondary project, I can help with that too.
The cell phones.
Yes. You're welcome.
Further questions? Not, I'll go ahead and call for the question, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous, thank you so much, Commissioner, appreciate it. Moving forward to item, uh, number twelve, discussion, appropriate action to approve slash reject copier service provider UVO Business Service. Is there a motion to open the item? Motion's been made by Commissioner Rios, is there a second?
Two.
Second, Commissioner agrees, discussion, being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, unanimous, item is so open, we care to approach.
Good evening, uh, my name is Eric Reed, I am a Director of Healthcare and Major Account Executive with UVO Business Services. Um, I've been brought in by Judge Can't Do to kinda fix a problem, an ongoing problem from what I understand. Um, with Toshiba, with Toshiba, um, Business Services, um, based on the copier, uh, infrastructure that you have. Um, just wanted to start off this evening, just kind of a little context of how I actually got introduced to Judge, uh, Can't Do. Um, I have a gentleman that I've worked with for about eight, eight years, as a matter of fact, the gentleman here knows him very well, Bobby Castillo. Uh, was the Director of IT out at, uh, Dimmit Hospital in Crimson Springs for about five years, so. I got to, uh, get introduced to him, service him for about five years and then he actually moved on to Middle Rio, uh, Development, uh. Middle Rio Grande Development Corporation and we've been servicing them for about two years now, so that's how we got introduced. And if it wasn't for his, uh, if it wasn't for his leading to, um, introducing, um. You know, that's, that's, uh, if, if he hadn't have done that, then I wouldn't, uh, have a good understanding of what you guys are doing. But, you know, that's the ultimate compliment for a sales rep is to get led into a, another opportunity. I'm not surprised, uh, I'm here to solve a traditional problem, um, Toshiba. Actually, a matter of fact, over the last, uh, six months, I've been acquired by, uh, Rico. That's public knowledge, you can go on the internet, read that. So they've been going through some transitions, so I'm, I'm not surprised I'm here to solve a problem, okay? Just give you a little bit of background who UVO is, we are the largest independent dealer, um, here in Texas. We represent, uh, Rico, Conica Minolta, Xerox and Canon. There's never been an opportunity in the, uh, industry that all four of us have been, uh, put together under one roof, which is UVO. Um, matter of fact, tomorrow I gotta go do a, um, project with another hospital down here too. And the reason I say that is because the market's in a mess. Market, uh, from a servicing standpoint is a mess. We are a service organization that actually takes care of copier printers and other, uh, devices, uh, from a security standpoint. But if I could just show this real quick, I'll just, I'll run through this, um, I don't know if you guys have a copy or not, but for whatever reason, it's not coming up. And that's fine if, if we don't, uh, do it on the screen. But I would, uh, I'd be a mess if I didn't, uh, introduce Erica Hay, she's with me, she also helps me with, uh, the larger, uh, opportunities that, uh, we support. So we're down here to give you a couple ideas to consider, um. Let's see here, is that big enough, or do you want me to, okay? Um, just some of the current challenges that you had, obviously, um, to, to echo one of my, uh, previous, um, presenters. He said that you had, how many, how many different invoices did you, did you have to pay?
Too many.
I'm, I'm gonna help AP, I'm gonna help AP, um, reduce their, their payment to a service provider like us, to one invoice. Okay, direct billing, it's gonna be laid out, so you don't have to have AP cutting nineteen different checks. One of the things that Toshiba does is they kinda skew the way that you're getting your, your bills and your services, so it actually makes it kinda messy to understand what's going on. After I've gotten an opportunity to understand what's going on, that's, that's where your current cost resides, is about eighty one hundred dollars a month with expansion. I know that we're gonna add on a couple different new units that the, uh, that the organization needs moving forward. Like I said, um, probably not many people know what an MPS rating is, but it's your Google score. We rank, um, an eighty five, which is very hard to get, especially with, there's a lot of irate people out there giving bad scores, you know, on your website. But with over thirty, this, this slide says twenty, we've got actually forty thousand, uh, independent reviews, all of them leading to four point nine. So just cause we're in the copier business doesn't mean you don't get good service, that's our first primor, primary. We lead with, um, the ability to change in and out of equipment, okay? I'm gonna show you a sixty month program, but give you the flexibility of moving out in thirty six months, okay? What we wanna do is we wanna bring the most lean operating expense to the organization, cause we know it's nonprofit. But we also wanna not tie you down to the latest and greatest technology that's due in thirty six months, just like I've heard from the telephone standpoint, same thing. You're dealing with computers, they happen to print, right? You want the latest and greatest and the best security aspects that they can have, that's what we're gonna bring to you, um. One of the things that we definitely take pride on is full functionality guarantee. What that really means is if it doesn't work, we replace it, it's not even a, it's not even a discussion. We want the full satisfaction of, of your term with us, okay? And then, no penalties for changing, I can kinda tell you, um, we took advantage of this, especially with a lot of nonprofits that had budgetary stuff. Get, get typed up real quick during COVID, we actually took in a lot of machines that needed to be traded back, cause people weren't coming to work. So we actually use that in our favor, because then also the ports were down and then we could actually get machines up, people that were actually needing it. So that's what our flexibility of our program is all about, is giving you that option to move in and out of technology as you see fit.
Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
You're, you're saying that, um. To repair or replace the, in, in agreement or, or equipment, how long would it take for us to be, for you guys to come in and, and repair something that's?
Sure. We're gonna have somebody here less than four hours. If it's deemed a major problem, we will probably have a machine down in two days, one day to put it up, cycle it up, second day to get it down here, okay? There's a couple things that we can do from a redundancy standpoint, but that's a different conversation with, uh, IT. Um, but as far as getting your service, uh, s- stuff done, um. Usually, every time that we get onsite to a, to a copier, we can fix it ninety nine percent of the time, cause we stock all the stuff in our trucks. That's one of the things that we wanna bring to you is that, that, hey, you know, we don't want your technician to be on your Christmas card list, cause you see him all the time. We want him to get in, fix the product right the first time and then you don't see him for a year, that's proper service, right? Um, we do a lot of different things that a lot of people don't do. Master technicians, it means that in the world of service, this is why we do so well. Our master technicians are ones that have ten to twenty years of, of in- industry experience. They hit certain service levels, they hit certain things, um, uh, guy, like guidelines that we have to hit to make sure the machines are working at all times. So we actually do not have any new service guys that we're training, everybody's ten to twenty years in the industry. So you might get a little bit more from a cost perspective, but you get a lot more in a working standpoint. There's, there's a reason I'm here, right? So you guys want good service, good product to use, um. And, and then here's, here's kind of what I was talking about, moving into new technology every thirty six months.
Where, where's, where are these technicians coming from?
All down here, actually, we take care of all of Rico Direct's, um, service down here. And I've got three technicians here in the area, so we go all the way up to, to, um, uh. Dimmit, all the way down this way, so I've got, I've got service techs in the area. So they're not dispatched from San Antonio and then have to come this way, they're all located down, down here. We actually bought a company out here, maybe six, six years ago, so we have brick and mortar, we have, uh, our service, service techs down here. But we do have our headquarters up in San Antonio. Okay, um, I gave you four options to consider. Um, you know, obviously, unfortunately, I can't bring as much cost savings as my previous, uh, person.
That's what I was waiting for, I'm looking, I was looking at my numbers, first thing, where's the savings?
There will be savings, I can get you guys some savings thirty six months from now, but what we have to do is we have to take you out of a contract that you just got into about twenty four months ago. You're right, in between twenty four and thirty six months in your Toshiba contract. I was able to actually, um, get more money from our manufacturers to help subsidize the transition costs. That's there, because you do owe a bank for the Toshiba's, I'm gonna make you break even on that aspect. And then just real fractional amount more, a little bit, but it sounds like you got a ton to work with. You can get out, you can get some, some new systems, right? So really, I see big vision wise, where I can help, uh, IT, um, I know that they've got digital faxing that they want. Um, there's some other stuff that we can do from a secure print aspect, that right now that you don't have, that would be maybe phase two. Um, the reality is we wanna get you the best service in the industry with the most flexibility. So, um, while I do have some options I've won, it does have cost savings involved, but there's two of them, if, if you really look at it. I would, maybe, if it were, if, if it were my decision, I'd go with the, uh, Lexmark, um. Down in the far right corner, only because I can do a couple more things from a technology perspective with that one, that I think your IT guys can, can appreciate, so. Um, one of the other things too, is today's the proposal, I've got about eighteen days, unfortunately. Um, to get everything just approved and, and whatever you guys decide, whatever. Um, I just know that that gives us thirty days to work with you from metal and rain and stall. But to make it easier, what I could do is a ninety day deferred aspect, where if you signed it. Where if you sign it in November and we get everything put together for December, you don't get billed till April first. You start your bill with us then. Uh but that gives us ninety days for we'll roll out the uh the solution. That way, your I T isn't under under pressure of getting, you know, twenty-two machines rolled out a short amount of time. I think Erica said that uh with twenty-two machines, we're we would talk about three days and roll out one for one. So about eight machines a day.
And we do that a little bit slower just to make sure. You guys obviously have a lot going on. The last thing you wanna do is just pull a machine out and be not be able to do what you need to do. So we're very slow and steady. You can take one out, we replace one, take one out and replace one, just to make sure that you guys are are still working, functioning like you should be.
Yep, and then in the background, we have our conference calls with your I T group prior to us getting on board.
But you all are handling what is that full transition? You all are handling coming in, taking that that uh machine
Yeah.
Plugging in the new one, making sure that it's online, doing everything, correct?
And then what we'll also do is we'll take your machines back, we'll warehouse them in a very safe area and then we'll watch that time tick down with uh Toshiba.
And as far as that that is concerned, like let's say with Toshiba and the existing contracts that that are there, you all are handling that cancel cancellation with them.
I need to work with you, but yes, I need to get your permission, so then I can work with them, but yes, absolutely. Um they're a little tricky. Toshiba's a little tricky, but I know them very well, so I can navigate to help them make
And that's and that's my only concern, because I know that in the discussions that we had had and in the overall review of what was all of the invoices for these machines, um the one thing that we were obviously seeing was that there were offices that were given way more copying uh provide uh provides or copier numbers numbers of copies per office versus others, where those others may have needed much more and we're getting penalized because we're going over that limit. So a lot of these copying contracts that obviously kind of have been in in play for many, many years. This is why I kinda wanted to hold off on some of these copier contracts was one, to make it easier for finance to handle the payment and processing everything that needs to go, because there's multiple invoices that are coming in at one time. Um to kind of subsidize everything, put all of our copying leases on one um one contract.
Yep.
And will help us, you know, on that contract. If one office needs to upgrade a machine at some point, well then it's just one modification to that one contract. We're not making those those changes to that to that degree. Right now, what we're what we're currently paying is uh the amount.
Eight thousand?
It was uh about eighty-one forty-four.
Okay. So on that on that issue, the I think that, you know, for for that purpose, I wanted to bring it to the court just for that for that consideration on these issues and what we're seeing. Um there, of course, had been even questions as far as what we had seen as possibly a consideration like for the plats and for those copy copiers, especially in planning, which possibly could have been placed into the consideration for scanning and placing those in documents uh for that for that process as well, which I'm sure we could modify that 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 into into uh into a contract.
That's easy to do. Um great point. It sounds like uh sounds like you know the U B O playbook.
My issue was that we had machines that were functional. Because it's just been, I've I've heard from different offices, you know, that there's been concerns with their with their machines. Some offices don't even have copying machines. And it's, you know, it's a part of the function of the responsibility that these offices have.
Yep, absolutely. Two things that uh your contractor will have is
No. Three offices that don't have
So you all share, so that way I know there's probably like seven machines, eight machines that are doing over the allotment, so you're getting charged overages. And then there's probably twelve machines that are doing under the allotment. So what you've been averaging is what I put up there, so that you just share it. And then what I can do from an individual billing standpoint is I can say, okay, this this is gonna be what your cost is, and then if you go over, we can quickly help you give the overages on that if if you have some. So it's gonna be a much easier way to manage, much better way to use the money that the organization has for those machines. And then that way, like like you said, if there is change, it's a very easy change with our rental program. So.
Question?
Yes, Commissioner.
Question on the on the toner. How do you handle that when the machines run out? Cause right now we have my office, we have that issue. That they won't send us new toner until the machine runs out. And sometimes we find, my office finds uh that we can't print for a couple of days until the Yeah, so how do you handle that?
So here's one of the great things, like in your contract, you have six different types of machines that you're using across the county, right? So we're gonna standardize it, so everybody has the same type of toner. There's two ways that we do it. With hospitals, we'll put up a huge rack of toner, so they can just pull from it. And when they start depleting, then they just call Erica organize with her and then she just sends a whole new bunch of toners. Or we've got sophisticated technology that allows us to see when like heavier users are being utilized. So if if twenty-five percent of the toners left, we're gonna auto ship. And what it's gonna do, what it's gonna do is it's gonna have a box that says whoever's in charge of that department, what department needs to go to. And then that way it auto fills that department. Now, it's a little tricky. I don't wanna waste everybody's time around that, but that's a way we could do it. Or if you have a central supply, and then they can just
Okay.
Yeah, but we never want you to be out of toner. Cause that means if you're not printing, we're not, we're not helping you. So. What uh what other stuff could I?
Is there any other questions that the court has?
I'm looking at the numbers, so I mean, so I'm waiting for them.
Judge? Yes.
In in the first page that that we have here on the current challenges. And number one, the Maverick County Clerk Office wants to replace Toshiba with a better service partner. Well, that that's one particular, I didn't know that 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 we have uh a number of offices that wanna get rid of the Toshiba's. This is only one. I mean, I'm sure your office gets all the complaints in there. So it
Yeah, well, my well, my office, that's why we brought these two items, because one, the phone issue has been a major issue for some time now. And the second one, of course, has been issues on copying machines for for the county. Um and I can tell you that we we have heard this on on multiple occasions. And like I said, there has been even offices that don't have a lease for an actual copier. They are working off of a H P, little z z z z type of a printer. Uh it's a little bit uh frustrating, I think, even for to the for those offices. But that's why, I mean, if we can find a way to make it pretty much condensed and to where there would be an easier way for us to work the actual systems um for our offices, I think that this would be a definitely a great option for us to look at. Um as mentioned, you know, that that's one office that's there.
It am I am I correct in saying, i- i- if they were saying that this this office, the County Clerk Office is is what it uses their copiers a lot?
Well, the Clerk's Office is the one that ma- manages, they're the official custodian of records. So let's say any type of issue, whether it's printing for marriage licenses, um printing for vital records, anything that has to do with um land records, any type of uh printing and open records that comes to that office. If anybody's office is gonna be using that machine, it's definitely gonna be the Clerk's. But for sure, when you have an office, like let's say just in 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 my office, there's only one printer for all of the individuals that are in there. So everybody prints to that one copier. Same thing would more than likely go for the other the other offices that that are seeing it specifically, that are tied to that one printer in their respective offices.
Um the County Clerk, he's only one office?
The uh the Clerk's Office has two, I believe.
Yeah, it's uh however many you had, I just paired up to be replaced. So yeah, it's a one for one change up.
You have one on lands, where land records and one in vitals.
Here's here's also the thing that um I didn't put in there, but what you have today with Toshiba is a certain model. If you were to go with the Lexmark ninety-six fifty-five, it's a totally different class, so it can take a lot more wear and tear. So as you guys are using it pretty heavily, it'll it it won't be compromised from a downtimes perspective. So you will get the you will be getting more productivity and longevity out of the parts too.
So let's say that on this on this particular contract though, if we are looking and we're seeing this, that we're not at this maybe the greatest savings that you know, that we could see if any, because of the contracts that are still sure in play. So let's say after thirty-six months, um would there be a reduction in that? And what will we be seeing at more or less around that time?
I have no idea. I have to I have to be, I could give you a uh answer that would be like ten to fifteen percent, because I don't know what the market's gonna do.
Okay.
Um just just to clear up transparency, I've been hit with nine different price increases over the last sixteen months. And you know, uh if if inflation goes down, then I can tell you it's gonna be cheaper. But I'm not sure what I, you know, but I can guarantee if you allow me to redo your contract in thirty-six months, I will make sure that you get down to the operating expense that you started at. I'll put that right in how I do it. That shouldn't concern you. It's it's more, that's my problem now. You know, I mean, that's my pledge to the to the group is I will make sure that you're operating at the same stuff. Now if you pick the Lexmark, not that I'm pitching any product over at different but if you do that, I think there's some machines where all the machines are fully loaded, got four drawers, a finisher. I don't think you have machines that are four drawers and finishing. I think they're all kinda built differently. I didn't get a chance to see how they're all built. I bet you, if we go like for like, I can get you down to um you know, a price that that's more reasonable, like eight two hundred. That way, like the only cost is fifty dollars more and that's over. Uh you'll be paying two dollars and fifty cents more on a machine.
Miss Barrantos?
Yes, I I I have a few concerns of procurement being one, but I believe you're a call.
Yeah, yeah, so
Did text D I R?
I'm sorry, you you're vendor through Texas D I R. We are D I R, but we also use um we also use uh P S A, which is Purchasing Solutions Alliance. Which you guys can become a member of if you're not already a member. Here's why we don't use D I R. D I R, if you read the fine print, doesn't allow you to change in and out of technology like we're giving you the flexibility to do. It needs you go from start point to end point. There are no changes of D N R or D I R. The reason that we use the P S A is because we wanna give you the flexibility. Trust me, I'm in with University of Texas. Just to name a organization that probably everybody knows a little bit about. We didn't do D I R specifically because of the equipment that they need to use, a lot of printing, a lot of copying. P S A allowed them to um to do that. But there's there's seventeen different types of nonprofit G P Os.
So procurement is one of my main concerns, and then the cost for the Toshiba contracts?
Yes.
That's another one. And then the copiers that we already own, that the county already own will be providing maintenance on those as well.
So I put in it, um put in the, so Judge has the one by seventeen sheet, how we got to the buyout aspect. I actually gave you a depreciation scale. So even though we're replacing the Toshiba's that you own, I'm giving you your money back compared to how where you are within when you purchased it. So if you purchased it for, say, six thousand dollars and you're fifty percent through your thirty thirty months in your sixty month depreciation, I'm gonna give you three thousand dollars back for that. So I'm giving you money back for what you already spent on that machine.
Well, for example, my department just purchased a copier in September that we haven't been able to use at all, because we don't have a maintenance contract on it.
Oh, that's not good.
Exactly.
But every machine that I had a contract to, whether it's purchased or or leased through Toshiba, I put a financial value that what it what it's worth to the county, and we're reimbursing you for that. So however you get.
So how about the departments like mine, that at the end of the year, they haven't been funding to purchase their copiers?
Yep.
How are they gonna get service? Or if it's not a Toshiba, is not part of the contract or anything?
Right, uh so the new one that would come in for that would be under the the br- the umbrella service contract.
Well, what if you have the one that we already owned that we have used down?
I can take it back and get you a value for it. Maybe reimburse you, since it's all brand new. I'd have to work with the details. But I could probably get you situated, because I don't want you, I don't want anybody spending money on something that they're not using and not feeling like they got the the hundred percent value out of what you purchased, if that makes sense.
What is what is the Toshiba obligation that the auditor is starting to have?
So every every Toshiba is on a different lifespan. At least, like, you've got like twelve Toshiba's that you leased thirty-six months ago. You've got like eight that you leased twenty-four months ago. And then you just started some not too long ago. Every lease opportunity, I'm sorry that I don't have the one by seventeen with me, but I showed where you were if it were to go down in December, from January first, we give you credit for everything that was unused. Does that make sense? Or obligated to Toshiba. So that way we make you whole, make the group whole. And then we can move forward together in the new program. So.
So so we would pay Toshiba for the remaining?
Yes, sir. Yeah, so what I would recommend is you put the money that's fought you out for the whole term to put it in a bank and then work with them H C A C H, and it just pulls it out automatically. That way, it's already accounted for. It's taken it down monthly, and then I give you a letter of intent ninety days prior to the end of those. And you write it, you get them to cancel it. I'll take the equipment, whether you want me to ship it back or whatever, we'll ship it back for you.
But that would be on the case.
That would be a lone case, just because she owns it, and I would have to ask for uh possession of it. So.
Yes, yes.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm with the District Clerk's Office. I'm the District Clerk for Haver County.
Yes.
Um we own a copiers, I'm not sure if it's the same situation as other offices, but in the past
Yep.
Who purchased a Toshiba and only paid maintenance fees, not a full-blown lease for the life of the affiliate? I don't know how that would affect us. And Judge, from your behalf as a financial officer, how would that affect my budget, since you provide me only X amount of money for copies and the changing of the of the cartridges and all that? I mean, is that gonna
So like, on 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 these issues, and that's why, that's why we're looking at this, because regardless of of where we are in these, the contracts that have been in play are set at a rate that every department, of course, has a certain amount that's set for for their they're budgeted for their copiers. So let's say in this case, for this con- this would be one contract, but we're still looking at that same rate that's obviously being paid out by every department.
Okay.
It's it's divided, obviously, but here's the issue is that you all are getting upgrades to these machines.
Okay.
Um there's not, there would not be an an effect financially for you and your departments or the departments, because it's, we're still looking now, we're gonna be looking at this and I turn on and say, no, well, now we're looking at a ten thousand dollar month upgrade. Well, then no. I'm glad I'll tell you that I would not recommend that at all, because we can't afford it.
Well, I appreciate your consideration in our office. I know in the past, you know, with our judges asking to to
One second. One second. Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wanted to be one in. Yeah, like I said, in our office, with the judge's demands of eight, nine, ten thousand dollar copies that I have to do it a day, um I had to switch everything to black and white, avoid paying extra fees for colors, um you know, things of that nature. And then I really do need, like, when I say two and a half copiers, two full capable copiers that can print out on it. When one's go- one goes down, we we are
And the question is, when you look at the Toshiba versus what would be possibly, let's consider, you know, Lexmark
Yep.
on this issue, the capability is greater?
Yeah, so the duty cycle is about forty percent higher. So what does that really mean? It means like you're, you don't have to change your oil out for forty percent. You know?
Like ours has like fifty copies per minute in
Yeah, you're gonna go up fifty-five, six sixty-five. So you're gonna get a better, bigger machine for the same amount of money that you're spending with Toshiba. So um yeah, to answer to answer your to answer your question, uh we just took your purchase and it has depreciation scale, right? All I did was I plugged that into the operating expense plus your service contract, and it came up to whatever it was. That was in the total. And then when we bill it back out, I'll go back to what it was and say, your department's gonna get the same. Does that make sense?
I think so. As long as it works, budget watch.
Trust me, I've I I do this for Trust me, I've, I, I do this for hospitals all the time. I probably manage sixty hospitals and I do this all the time from a department. Operational standpoint, budgets are very, very important, so I get that. It's easy, we got this, we got this dialed in, we do this every day. So, just, just to put you guys at ease when it comes to that.
As far as my department, as we started that again, I go back to the procurement process, how we came this, I know the, the, the. Phones and internet, there was a, and it's a, it's approved. I don't know how we got here with this, so I just wanna make sure that before we approve or sign anything. We make sure that the proper procurement was on. That, that's my concern.
Okay, so for, uh, for that purpose, um, and I know obviously in when I'm bringing this to the court, Miss Barrentos, there's reasoning as to why I do what I do. Um, and on these issues, I just wanna make sure that for where we're at, understanding as to what could be provided. I think this gave the, the court a good understanding as to the, the possibilities because they are a lot, just like the phone system, situation. It's, uh, that's over two hundred lines that we need to go countywide. Um, here, you know, we're talking, uh, you know, it's a, it's a, uh, machines, uh, you know, how many were there in total?
Uh, there's nineteen currently, it'll be twenty-one.
Twenty-one in total. So, once we, we get this finalized, I mean, I know that, like I said, the, the. Three offices that are in, in, um, in question as far as to get their machines, they've already, they're like. Do I get it, do I go this route or what do, what do I do? And we've kind of just been looking at the situation to say, if you just give us some time just to finalize these numbers. Present to the court and see if there's anything else that we need to do in order to go ahead and proceed from here. So, um, from that, you said that you were through PSA?
PSA, yes.
PSA members? We are right now members of?
Uh, DIR, tips next minutes.
So, um, on that, on that matter then, so then we would have to consider, what is the membership to become a PSA member?
PSA is free.
Okay.
And definitely that's, that's the opportunity they like, they have to look into this?
I'm sorry?
That's the opportunity I'd like to have to look into all this, see what we need to do.
How long is that gonna take you, Miss Barrentos? Next meeting?
Probably. That depends on the next season, it's an opportunity for the next four days.
So if you want to see.
We, well, I know that we've been members because when we were at our annual, our annual conference, we visited with PSA, that we are members.
And I understand that I decided to have the opportunity to verify all the information.
I just wanna know are we members of PSA or not?
Oh, I don't know.
So.
So you don't know which, which members we are on, on by one? You are sure?
We're not sure.
Judge, if you're gonna take an action, my, action on this item, it would be to join PSA, direct the auditor's office to join PSA.
Okay. That's fine. Um, for that purpose, uh, we can go ahead then and, and, uh, and proceed with that, making sure that we are in, um. In compliance for the purchasing requirement. Um, if we can visit with this within, uh, the week. Um, to visit with the auditing department, would that be something you could work out, um, on this issue?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, that's.
Perfect. So then if we can schedule that and maybe possibly visit with, um, with them, I don't know if you're heading back today or?
I'll be heading back to, uh, tomorrow afternoon.
Okay. Would it be an opportunity to visit with them tomorrow? That'd be fine with y'all, auditors? You'd make some time tomorrow? Can you do that in the morning?
I can definitely try, yeah.
Okay, sure. Yes, Miss Barrentos.
As you said, it is free, open to all political subdivisions and county municipalities, those kinds of things. It's an interlocal purchasing agreement. So any action you wanna take, I would authorize to execute this free application to join the P, Purchasing Solutions Alliance. That's the action you wanna take now. That way it's free and you can use it for anything, any other purchase going forward as well.
Confirming whether we are or not if we need to join.
Do both.
Right. Hey, is there a motion to that fact? Motion's been made by Commissioner Rios, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Ramos, discussion? Did you have anything else to add?
I do have a list, I can open it up and, and, uh, I can give it to you after, if, I can confirm with her. In the next ten minutes.
Perfect.
Yeah, so whatever's easiest for you guys.
Very well. If there is no further discussion on this item, then we'll go ahead and call for the question. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Thank you so much. We'll be, we'll be visiting on this issue with, um, Miss Barrentos. If you wanna visit with her. Uh, today, if not, first thing tomorrow morning. Alright, thank you. Alright, moving forward, uh, to, uh, the next on the agenda. I'm gonna go ahead and kinda go out, out of order here, just to kinda get some other individuals out before we kinda start going into the purchasing policy. Uh, so item number fourteen, discussion appropriate action to approve the contract from Mary O'Vary. Court reporter under the OLS contract, uh, grant number four, three, seven, six, three, zero, five. Is there a motion to open the item? Motion's been made by Commissioner Ramos, I mean, Rios, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Ramos, discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item is so opened. Uh, on this item, uh, I believe this is just standard, uh, contract renewal for new portion for the court reporter from Mary O'Vary. Um, Mr. Retchetta, is there anything specific on this item?
Uh, nothing, Your Honor, it's, it's already in the grant budget as we speak, so it, it would just be a ratification for the contract for the fiscal period.
So, motion's been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rios, discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number fifteen. Discussion and appropriate action to approve and accept an amended Operation Lone Star grant number four, three, seven, six, three, zero, five. Budget is approved by the Office of the Governor of Texas with no additional cost to Maverick County. Is there a motion to open the item? So, motion's been made by Commissioner Ramos, second by Commissioner Rios, discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous, item is so opened. Mr. Retchetta?
Uh, yes, Your Honor, Commissioner's Court. Uh, just briefly, give you a little bit of an update for the fiscal period. For the new grant, which ends in zero five. We have been awarded four point six million dollars for this round of funding, so I'm very proud of that. That's another. OLS grant that we've brought to the community and so we have four point six million dollars available to bring into our community for assets and needs that we have. A little bit of information on the previous grant that ended in zero four, that grant is technically still open. We have asked the governor's office to extend it a little bit further. So that we can finish some major purchases that we were doing. Um, if y'all remember, we were in the process of acquiring some vehicles for our local constables. We were able to get that approved in the budget. We had a little bit of a delay in, in the sense that, uh, the vehicles needed to be equipped. With all the law enforcement equipment and because of that it was gonna pass the deadline of the ending of the grant from last year. So I reached out to the governor's office, they agreed to extend it a little bit further. And we are in the process of getting those vehicles delivered, hopefully sometime soon. So we're very proud of that. We're getting all the constables a brand new vehicle equipped with all the bells and whistles. So that they can continue helping and patrol here in Maverick County. Uh, now, as per the current grant, we're back in the O five grant. Uh, just wanna let everybody know that we, there were a lot of changes now that OLS is, is kind of, uh. We're on our outgoing time of the, of the grant. For sure, we have this year funded. We are hoping, you know, that we continue with at least some form of funding, but however, it's been discussed that we are obviously gonna start reducing the amount of awards. You know, from the grant, uh, like, a lot of the workload is now going back to fixing. Or taking, addressing stuff that's still in the pipeline. I know at the district attorney's office, we still have a lot of cases pending in the, for trial. We have a lot of cases that are still pending there. In my office at the county attorney level, we have a lot of cases in the court of appeals, we have a lot of bond forfeiture cases. We have a lot of cleaned up stuff that we say, you know, we did have over six thousand cases that we had to address the past couple of years. So this is all the stuff that we're coming now and coming and helping back. We still have a lot of programs that are being implemented to help a lot of our. Local ranchers and farmers that received damages during this time. There's a lot of grant, there's a lot of other grants that the OLS operations team can help with. Our local ranchers and farmers. Uh, some major points that I wanted to point out that we did remove a lot of previous funding. So I know that there was a push from administration so that we can help reduce the bankroll that was required for Operation Lone Star, because it is a large grant. So with that, we, we had a lot of meetings and we were able to discuss what cuts we needed to make. We reduced a lot of the stipend work. We reduced a lot of the staffing in a lot of departments. You know, so we removed positions and in, in turn, that's gonna give Maverick County a lot more operational money to be used for other things. However, allow us to continue operating the multimillion dollar grant while we have it. Uh, something to note, we did get approved for multiple vehicles for the sheriff department in this round of funding. So that's something that we're very proud of. We're hoping to get that done fairly soon. There's a lot of law enforcement equipment that we applied for this round of funding that hopefully will, will be brought to Maverick County and be more equipment. That will be at no cost to Maverick County citizens. It's all grant funded. And, um, I just wanna say we're real proud of all the work that all the departments have done, everything that we continue to do and. As we get, enter our exit phase of this grant. So what, what this shows you right now, the attachment. This is all the changes that we did. Obviously, we started a little bit later into this fiscal period because of the summer legislative session that was going on in Austin. So it took them a little bit to finalize this round of OLS funding. We finally got that done. We then reached out to the governor's office again so that we can make all the amendments that we needed to do. Mind you, when we applied to this grant, this was almost. A year ago and a lot's happened in a year. So we needed to make a lot of amendments, a lot of changes, a lot of downsizing. And, and rearranging the monies. Uh, another thing to point out, we did get funding for our district courtrooms, both of them, as well as this, this courtroom as well. To get some more technology in here and update the technology and have. OLS pay for the technology as opposed to, you know, having to pull it from our regular office budgets. So that's something that we're helping with amongst other things. So this grant already has been submitted to the governor's office in the form that you see it. It's already been approved by the governor's office. So now this is just kind of our fresh start to say, so that we're not going on a temporary basis as we did. At the beginning of the grant, just kinda temporarily funding everybody. This is our official start to the Operation Lone Star of this fiscal year. With the amended changes and then obviously anything that needs to happen from this point forward, we'll make the changes as needed. So. I know that was a bit much.
Okay, I just have a question on the district attorney's office, did we? That's gonna, they're excluded from any changes, is that correct?
So as of right now, the district attorney's office did receive one, uh, reduction. There was one reduction that was applied to multiple different departments. I believe their reduction was an attorney position. The benefit of the district attorney's office is that they, they were recently funded a BPU grant. They moved a lot of their employees over to the BPU grant, which was something that was already planned. So OLS wise, they lost an attorney position, but that attorney was moved to a different grant. But they remained with multiple other positions that they already had. And also which, which, uh, a lot of it was rent and expenses and, and other, other set positions. Cause I know, I know right now that I believe they're currently in the process of hiring other positions. All, just like any other grant and any budget, this is subject to amendments and changes. But as of right now, my understanding is it was just one position that they were advised months ago about. My office and many other offices had a lot of cuts as well.
So he's aware of it, the?
Oh, yes, yeah, they, they were.
Well.
Who stipulates, who stipulates the, the budget cuts?
So that was done on the previous time between the grant administrator, which is our county judge, and me, the project director, and also we reach out to. The auditing department as a finance aspect if any changes need to go through them. But we, we do that with the, we reach out to the departments, we let them know what changes are coming, what's, what to be expected and we do this. Well in advance before any of these change, they don't happen from one day to the next. They happen with months' notice and letting them know what's gonna happen. And again, if we could fund everybody, we would continue to do so, but as you know, previous grant cycles, we were given five million dollars. Now we got four point six, so we got a significant hit into the grant, but we're still one of the, one of, if not the highest, OLS grant receiver. So it's just like anything else, we, we have to make the amendments where we can.
We might get some millionaires out there for the sheriff's substitution and some other help in there.
So I, I will point out that, uh, uh, some of the changes that are coming out from the governor's office now is that they are not allowing new position creations. So the only thing that we are doing is anything that we currently did have funded, we can replace those positions, you know, somebody were to transfer, move, et cetera. But any new creations and stuff is, it goes through a much harder process now because we are in the downturn of the Operation Lone Star. And I cannot say this is the last year. I don't, I don't believe it is, but we are definitely on the downturn of Operation Lone Star. So we do currently have a multimillion dollar awarded grant, which very proud of and, and I think Maverick County should utilize it as much as possible while we have it.
But the legislation, state legislation, they should get billions of dollars, so some of that money should be coming by way of the OLS.
I, I agree with you. I agree with you. So because legislation works in two-year cycles, they already had to allocate the monies for two years. So I would assume that another year after this should be in the pipeline, but again, that's not my call, that'd be at the governor's office level.
Question, Mr. Rios. So these positions here are the ones that were funded?
That is correct. Yeah, the, the positions that we, that, that the attachment that you have right now is already approved by the governor's office at this time. Obviously, subject to this court's approval. My recommendation at this time is that we continue as, as it is right now. Uh, we, I did speak with our grant administrator. We do intend to reevaluate the grants on a three-month process. Quarterly process, so that way we can see and make determinations that if there is any other cuts that need to be done. Or reallocation of assets at that time, we can reach out to the department head, we can, we can discuss options and see what's best for this. Again, this is a one hundred percent fully reimbursable grant. If we can keep it as is, that'd be great. But we also don't want anybody just sitting idly by, not doing anything, if they don't have the workload or they don't have anything to do. Then we need to readjust and figure that out at that time. But that, that goes to the department head, that goes to everything else. But we've already made significant changes and significant cuts to the grant to help bring more money back to Maverick County to use operationally in other, in other areas. While still funding this grant.
Okay, well, as there will be, of course, uh, quarterly reviews, uh, with this amongst the project manager and myself, along with, um, finance for these purposes. Um, we'll be reviewing this issue. Um, if there is a concern with the departments, uh, with any of the matters, I mean, obviously, as this has been submitted. To the state for its approval, um, we will definitely have an opportunity to visit with the departments and see what issues, um, do arise. In order for us to go ahead and address that. Um, I know that for that purpose, there is. Under the DA, I'm looking at that there is one assistant attorney that is funded, fully funded under the project?
Correct.
And?
There used to be two.
Okay. And that position prior to was not filled?
That is correct.
So that's why the state cut that project. There was not a name nor a placeholder that allowed for that, that position to be held?
Correct. So, so in fact, the position that was removed from the district attorney's office was, was not even a person, it was a line item. That had not been filled for X amount of months, so in order to avoid having to let go staff or somebody actively working. There was a budget cut made to an unfilled position that.
And mind you, did the state not do that for every department? If they were not properly filled with a name or a placeholder. The state cut those positions?
That's correct, yeah.
We did not.
That's correct. So Austin itself automatically, any position that is unfilled or, or doesn't have a name as a placeholder or anything of that sort. Those are the automatic cuts that, that are made. So, so mind you, when, when I submit the grant, we don't submit just for five, five million, we submit for. Eight million, ten million, et cetera. Obviously with the hopes of getting what we can from Maverick County. And this particular grant, I, I wanna say, you remember, I think it was like seven? I think we submitted somewhere, somewhere in the world of seven million dollars. We, you know, we, we had meetings with every single department head and asked them. What is it that you need for Operation Lone Star? And we submitted every single one of those requests. And with that, the, the governor's office then starts making their own cuts. And if the position is unfilled, has no name, no placeholder. Those are automatically the first ones that get cut. So that position itself happened on its own. So it didn't affect the person, it actually saved other departments and, and also came from Austin.
I have one more question. On the previous, uh, grant. Uh, where are we, do you know? Or maybe Miss Barrentos can brief us on the reimbursements?
Oh, I know we've gotten some reimbursements already, as, I think the only close out that we need for the previous grant. Is getting those vehicles equipped. We can't ask for that. We've already asked for the vehicles themselves, but not the equipment. So that's the whole, uh, on. We cannot get that equipment reimbursed until we get the vehicles equipped.
Does that make sense?
And I think the extension was through March, right? Through March.
Yeah, so, so we've purchased those vehicles?
The date that we're looking at to receive them?
I'm sorry?
To receive the vehicles?
March.
We will receive them?
March, yeah.
And they will be equipped by March?
Yes, I mean, the vehicles, we can have them, they can bring them at any time, but it's the equipment that's taking one, two, getting.
Okay, but what about the O four grant?
Yeah, that, that's what she's speaking about. So the O four grant, which is the one that technically we're still in the closing phase of. That one, we've purchased the vehicles already, but then they had to be. That one, we've purchased the vehicles already, but then they had to be equipped with the law enforcement equipment, which would be the lights and the sirens and all of it.
So that's the only thing we have pending for reimbursement from the O four?
As far as.
Any major?
Well, no, they haven't been able to reimburse the vehicles because they're not fully equipped yet. So until everything is, the vehicles have been reimbursed?
Yeah, the veh- the vehicles Maverick County's already incurred them, so we've been able to get that reimbursed. Just the equipment itself, Maverick County doesn't have ownership of it because it's still being installed. So once it's installed, which they have to have the vehicle to do that, then we can, we can say we have it and we can seek reimbursement. The only things that we've been dealing with now has been, you know, just simple auditing stuff where the where the auditing department will ask us, hey, we need to make a budget amendment to move over, you know, fifteen hundred dollars to cover some expenses we didn't, we didn't see here for fringe or something along those those lines. But those have been the minor things, but my understanding any, which obviously the vehicles which are four, because one of them was a was a ATV that we purchased, which is already in precinct three. Um the other one is the four vehicles, which is a fairly large expense and the hundreds of thousands, obviously.
But a question was requested in other, um, all the budget amendments for the OLS. Do they normally come before commissioners' court? And if they don't, why not?
So in previous commissioners' courts, we have taken the position that only major budget amendments come in front of commissioners' court. And so we've we've actually had that done already through commissioners' court. And so typically, we've determined that it was anything that was above, what is it, fifty thousand?
During procurement?
Yeah, yeah. So we 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 had to, if I remember correctly, we had determined that anything that that amounts to like a procurement purchase, that would come in front of commissioners' court. Anything minor than that, as long as it's approved through the governor's office, we we handle it ourselves.
Yeah. So it's not counted like all of the four regular budgeting?
Well, remember that we don't determine how these funds are used. It's the state.
Correct.
The governor's office is the one that's responsible for allowing us to utilize this funding. So when the governor's office tells us, yes, you can use this funding for that, then we know that it's within the allotted amount that has been approved by the court and the acceptance of the court. But for anything that's above that fifty thousand range, obviously, that's not gonna happen. And rare, it's very rare when you see any type of amendment that's coming before uh at that level. I mean, unless it's vehicles that we're purchasing or something of that nature. But outside of there, there is no other.
Yeah, so so tip, e- exactly, Judge. So typically, any major change like that is is, I don't foresee anything happening like that anymore, especially with how more uh strict they have become now on the on the tail end of the grant. So that's why we're having now kind of like our initial budget assessment for Operation Lone Star for this fiscal period. And any minute changes that need to be perfranged or or something that the, you know, we'll get emails from money telling us, you know, that we can move this or that or something. And we'll handle that internally through E-grants and through the governor's office and anything of that sort. But any major changes will come here in front of this court, obviously, subject to its approval and subject to the governor's office approval as well.
Which is the final say?
Correct.
Is there any other questions regarding the amendment? Or the con- the approval of the um acceptance of the amendments? Is there a motion?
It's a motion.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Reese. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rios, discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Right, thank you.
Great senior.
Yes, likewise, your excuse, sir. Moving forward to item number sixteen, uh discussion and appropriate action to approve a modification of the MVCPA and uh SB two twenty-four statement of grant award, specifically the budget. The proposed modification would revise the travel budget line item to include reimbursement for attendance by task force commanders at the quarterly MVCPA board and grant budget review meetings in additionally to the currently approved MVCPA annual conference. Is there a motion to open the item?
It's a motion.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Reese. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner uh Rios, discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item is so open. Mr. Reese, be careful.
Good evening, Judge, Commissioners. Uh this item is just to modify the budget. It's for the Motor Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority. This is the Catal- Catalytic Converter Grant. And the thing that we are changing here, we have eight thousand total in our travel budget for the investigators. Uh unfortunately, whenever we wrote the grant, it was just eight thousand that was uh budgeted for the annual conference. So since then, uh they are required to attend quarterly meetings um e- every year. They're now required to the investigators. So what we wanna do is modify that uh line item budget and go ahead and put three thousand five hundred. So it'll cover for their quarterly meetings that they have to attend, which would leave four thousand five hundred still for their annual conference. Um we're required to bring it to court before we make any modifications to the grant budget.
Is there a motion? So motion's been made by Commissioner Reese, second by Commissioner Rios, discussion? Being there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number seventeen, discussion and appropriate action to approve payment of an invoice from Stewart Title Company for a title search conducted as part of the requirements for the Texas Parks and Wildlife Local Park Outdoor Grant Program. The title search was performed for Elm Creek in connection with the development of an all-inclusive playscape. Is there a motion to open the item? Motion's been made by Commissioner Rios, second by Commissioner Ramos, discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item is so open. Mr. Reese?
Judge, Commissioners, this is uh item is a pending invoice that we have for Stewart Title. Uh I believe we spoke about this uh one time in uh executive session. Um the invoice still has not gotten paid. I don't think we got direction from that executive uh session. We just wanna bring it back up so we can get that invoice paid for Stewart Title. Uh again, this is a requirement now. This is the first year that Texas Parks and Wildlife requires us to do this. Um I guess there were some internal issues that they were having with the grants and properties where parks go to uh with the investment that they're making in the properties uh with parks. Um so we just wanna get a clear direction that we can go ahead and uh take care of this invoice.
So motion's been made by Commissioner Ramos, second by Commissioner Rios, discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number eighteen, discussion and appropriate action to accept violence against Women's Act of Bala Grant Award. Is there a motion to open?
It's a motion.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Reese. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rios, discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item is so open. Mr. Reese?
Judge, Commissioners, congratulations. We were awarded a uh big, uh Violence Against Women Act uh grant. Uh this is a grant that we uh normally get continuously uh every year. It's been about, I think this is the eleventh year that we've gotten awarded. And what it uh funds is partially an investigator for the sheriff's office that is just specifically for uh uh sexual uh crimes in nature, investigations that they need to do. Uh any kind of um harassment, uh bullying type of things towards the women. The majority of our our women, it's around, I think, ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent, very small case for men, but they are uh focused on ta- taking care of the women um and making sure that they don't have any uh violent crime towards them. Uh this will fund twenty-seven thousand, ninety-three with seventy-five cents. And of course, the match would be nineteen uh thousand one hundred and seventy-two less year with twenty-five cents for a total of forty-six thousand two hundred and sixty-six. Uh the sheriff office will budget it for the leftover that's uh the match.
Is there a motion?
It's a motion.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Rios. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reese, discussion? Being that, yes.
So this grant is specifically for the investigator only?
Correct, it's just colors of salary.
No vehicle, no anything else for the investigator?
No, unfortunately, this fund is not, i- it's not too much funding available. So we have a gentleman's agreement that uh we just apply for for this one here. Uh Del Rio also applies for this fund. We're the only two that apply for Middle Rio Grant. Usually theirs is just a promotional type of thing. They get a minimal amount. We usually score a little bit higher than them and we're we're first place on that. So we get the the payment or the higher uh selection first. Um of course, this has been going on for about eleven years. This is what we always apply. And again, it's a gentleman's agreement with us and Del Rio how we handle that.
Further questions? Not? A call for the question. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number nineteen, discussion and appropriate action to accept a Safe Streets For All um Grant Agreement Award for Maverick County Safe Streets and Roads For All Action Plan. Is there a motion to open the item?
It's a motion.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Rios. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reese, discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Mr. Reese?
Uh Judge, Commissioners, with this one, I apologize. I request uh we can get it withdrawn. Some new information uh came up uh in this uh grant and uh we would have to withdraw this item.
Very well. Item is so withdrawn. Item number twenty, that all items you have?
Yes.
Your excuse, sir. Item number twenty, discussion and appropriate action to approve case file con- uh conversation phase three by Terologic Systems for the District Clerk's Office funds to be designated from archive recovery and preservation accounts. Is there a motion to open the item? Item has been opened by Commissioner Rios. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese, discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item is so opened. Mr. Vialma?
Thank you, Judge. My name is Mr. Vialma, your district clerk here in Maverick County. Um Judge, thank you for putting this item on the agenda. Basically, this is going to be a, what we call a third phase to our scanning project here in uh Maverick County in our district clerk's office. We've just been overwhelmed with documentation that we felt we needed to 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 make a little bit of room, a little bit more with with the workload that we've had. Um with this, I had an opportunity to send uh this contract to our general counsel, Mr. Groves. I'd like to thank uh our general counsel for his promptness in reviewing the uh contract. This was the same one we had la- uh the last time, but he found some areas of uh improvement, modifications, things that will help protect our county. So there was an amendment uh addendum, I'm sorry, made to the contract. We forwarded it to Terologic, they agreed with it. Uh they even added a line item, which I brought back to our general counsels. He thought it was proper to add and has been added to the contract. What we would need today would be, Judge, it approved by commissioners' court, your signature. Uh I would need general counsel's signature on the contract. I did forward the contract to our uh uh auditor, uh and uh that also would need her approval uh for that. Now, like these funds are going to be coming out of our uh EFO, uh which we're gonna dry out already, our EFO uh recovery fund, our uh records, arch IP and our district clerk's management and preservation fee will be taking up. We're gonna pretty much be using up most of these funds for this particular project. As we move forward, we'll have to find out how we can work with our county budget to continue this project or how how we can maneuver the space. But this will help us a lot in uh these next couple of years to to improve technology and having it electronically uh recorded. While we look at working with both our district judges to see how we can kind of phase out uh paper and uh and yes, and and move into that, but i- i- it's a challenge, it's a challenge. And of course, uh with this contract that we're talking about, uh of of copiers and so forth, I know that our office cannot be down uh a single copier with the the amount of production that we that we that we use. Uh outside of that, uh I don't know if the commissioners, yourself, Judge, have any questions? I'll be glad to try to answer.
No, Judge.
Yes.
Ju- I just wanna congratulate you for for bringing this on. We really need to go move forward and and start using the technology.
I think it's a direction that our county judge would like us to move to. I do have my hands tied sometimes, but we're we're.
That is my motion, Judge.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Ramos. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese, uh Commissioner Rios, discussion? If there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Vialma.
Thank you. Uh one quick thing, though.
Yes.
I do have a physical copy. I don't know if our uh our general counsel will be available for his signature and our auditor and that way I can wait for yourself.
Yeah, that's fine. If you can just get that over to to Mr. Groves and then Ms. Barrientos can certify that those funds are actually available. Alright, there is nothing further. We'll go on to the next item. Item number twenty-one, discussion and appropriate action for the Maverick County Auditor's Office to retain the law office or law firm of Sanchez and Wilson for professional services and the contract for said services is ordered as exempt from exi- uh competitive bidding pursuant to two six two to point zero two four of the Texas Local Government Code authorizing the Maverick County Auditor to execute the contractual agreement with the law firm of Sanchez and Wilson, P L L C. Is there a motion to open the item?
That's my motion.
Motion's been made by Commissioner um Morales. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner uh Rios, discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Yes, your excuse, sir. Uh to move on?
Yes. Yes.
Is there any questions? I, is there, uh I, on this particular item, Mr. uh Commissioner? I know that I did have some legal questions that I'd like to have some discussion on, but I don't know how you wish to proceed, Commissioner.
Uh I just want um the selection of the attorneys at the discretion, it's for legal at the the question is at the discretion of the auditor. And this is something that we've done before, that's why last time that we brought this item is with discussing closed session. And we're bringing it up again. Are your questions, Judge? You wanna take this in closed session or?
Yes.
I got no problem.
Okay, if there is nothing, we'll take, we'll move this into executive session. Item number twenty-two, discussion appropriate action to purchase cluster mailbox unit CBU for predominantly public purpose. Is there a motion to open?
So move, Judge.
Item has been opened by Commissioner Morales. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rios, discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item is so opened. Commissioner?
Judge, um I'm bringing this to get a uh CBU for one of our subdivisions. And I wanna state that the predominantly public purpose would be for court notices and official government correspondence, voter registration cards and election notices, medical-related mail, including doctor notices and prescription medications and just general correspondence and package deliveries. Uh and that is my motion, Judge.
There's a motion by Commissioner Morales. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner um Ramos, discussion? Is there anything further that needs to be cleared out uh from this purpose, legal?
Does the county get a received return benefit?
So I'm stating just as I did on the last time, the uh the public purpose and the benefits for the residents of Maverick County.
And the county will receive a a return benefit?
Correct.
From the expensive funds? If the court finds there's return benefit to county, it's public purpose. Your question?
Very well. Being that there has been a determination of that such uh as stated by the commissioner, is uh we'll ahead and call for the question. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number twenty-three, um on discussion and appropriate action to approve the fiscal year twenty-five budget amendments. Those budget amendments have been provided for your review. Um I will call just real quick to open the items. Items twenty-three to twenty-seven, is there a motion to open those items for uh review as we have taken that? Item has been made by Commissioner Ramos, second by Commissioner Rios, discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Those items have been opened for discussion. Item number twenty-three, is there any questions regarding the budget amendments? This is for fiscal year twenty-five.
Yes, Judge. I have a question on item eleven. It stipulates uh six hundred dollars and I have a copy of the budget amendment and the budget amendment reads seven hundred.
Twenty-six. That there's two of them. So this one is for twenty?
Five, six.
But there's one for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six and one for twenty-five.
So there's one for seven hundred and one for six hundred?
The item is listed, but you do twenty-five, you tell it to twenty-six.
We're on twenty-five right now.
And it's a different account? Oh, it's the same account. Okay, I got it.
But right now, we're on twenty-five, so it's this one. So is there a specific question?
I don't have, no.
No.
How are we still closing out twenty-five on those issues?
I believe we're getting close to closing them out. We still have some pending.
Very well. Alright, is there a motion to approve uh budget items for uh fiscal year twenty-five budget adjustments? Uh motion's been made by Commissioner Ramos. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rios, discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number twenty-four, discussion appropriate action to approve the fiscal year twenty-six budget amendments. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Commissioner uh Ramos. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rios, discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number twenty-five, discussion and appropriate action to ratify the time-sensitive payments released by county treasurer and auditor? There any specifics that have been submitted, Ms. Barrientos? They're right here. My list, Commissioner.
Uh, yes, um I can give you my copy.
I didn't, I don't even have one touch.
Give me one second, cause I'm. Between Commissioner Ramos and Commissioner Rios, you all take all of my documents. Alright.
They're basically few uh nutrition sets, oh no, auto parts, few communication.
communications, um, utilities. Repairs, AT&T, hard comp, pretty much all the utilities.
Which one are you looking at?
There's that one.
AP list?
Yes.
So, these are their routine expenditures, the ones that we don't bring.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, there, okay, sorry.
Yes, yeah, there's NG resources and all them again. Item Can we identify that, Ms. Barrientos, on the next ones that you provide, that those would be the time-sensitive?
Um, I believe they are.
'Cause that's what I'm looking at. I know the list is AP.
It's the three fifty-four routine expenses.
Can we just make sure that for, just for clarity on Commissioners, that that lists time-sensitive? Okay.
So moved, Judge.
Motion's been made by Commissioner uh, Ramos, second by Commissioner Rios. Discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number twenty-six, accounts payable. Accounts payable has been provided, uh, for your review. Are there any questions regarding the accounts payable?
So moved.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Re- uh, Reese. Discussion?
Judge, I believe, um, there was an item for was it for Commissioner Ramos or Roden Bridge? It's for Roden Bridge. It's invoice number three sixty-three, nine, one, three, eight, nine. Vendor three, 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 four, Grand Hyatt San Antonio Riverwalk, out of Roden Bridge. In the amount of five hundred sixty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents. This is for the Roden Bridge Supervisor travel. This one was not included in the regular AP list because it was pending the budget amendment. So, it
So, it'll be included now?
Yes.
Is there something that needs to be incorporated?
With your consent, yes.
Is there a motion to incorporate that with the, the consent of the Motion's been made by Commissioner Reese. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rios. Discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number twenty-seven, warrants pending. Are there any questions regarding the warrants pending? Motion's been made by Commissioner Reese. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner, uh, Rios. Discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. All right, moving on to executive session.
They're cutted.
Yes. Very true. Did y'all have any questions regarding the purchasing policy?
Yes. And execution, yes.
Okay, these, um, for that purpose, um, item number thirteen, um, discussion and appropriate action to approve the amendments to the Maverick County purchasing policy. Item number twenty-one, um, in regards to the, uh, Maverick County Auditor Office retaining the law firm of Sanchez and Wilson for professional services in the contract for said services. Item number twenty-eight, one, funding obligations for firing EMS interlocal agreement. And funding, I'm sorry, twenty-eight dash two, county reimbursement of legal expenses. Uh, for that purpose, I will go ahead and we'll move into executive session on Wednesday, November twelfth at six fifty-three PM.